Study meeting, which wouldn't be changed, but on the regular as well.
Okay.
It's the only one.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any questions or concerns for tonight's meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our application GP two twenty twenty two. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Pastore. And this is concerning our general plan to update the major street plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just pulling up the presentation for this. All right, so this is actually at the request of our Public Works Department. So we have the city's major street plan, which is part of our general plan. And really what this does is outline where major streets would be in the city as well as the the future right of way width. So the ultimate width we'd like these streets to be. Now, many of these streets are at that width already, but there are some that are not. And we use this tool just by way of background for a number of things. So for example, when a new project comes in, the major street plan helps determine where the setback would be. So we don't want to build a building and then a road get widened and be it be in the setback, for example. Or if a new subdivision comes in, we make sure we get the right of way dedication that we need so that the road can be widened in the future. So those are a couple of examples of how we use this in practice. So this map here, I know it's small, will show some close ups of this. Highlights the three changes. And they relate to Leicester Street, which is in the salvage yard area there off just west of fifty six hundred west. An extension of fifty nine hundred west and then seventy two hundred west. And again, I'll highlight each of these. So here's the this aerial photo of this, the larger area of the city, the northwest portion of the city. So again, the seventy two hundred west would be this section north of two oh one up to our boundary here at twenty first south. You have the extension of fifty nine hundred west, which you can kind of see here was under construction at the time, but this this road is now complete. So it's extending fifty nine hundred west down to the interchange here at Parkway. And then Lester Street would just be up in this area through here. So here's now a close up. So north is to the right on this image. So it's basically showing a sixty six foot right away for Lester Street that would extend from twenty four hundred south, which is on the south end of the salvage yards. And then have this kind of curving road that connects to fifty six hundred west with the intent being to improve access for properties in this area, improving access to fifty six hundred west. And just by way of background, the portion of Lester Street through the salvage yards is already a sixty five foot right away. So it's a pretty minor adjustment. There's this really mainly is to address this connection out to fifty six hundred west. And again, this just shows the plat map showing that it is the existing right away is sixty five feet. This map here, just for reference, it comes from the Wasatch Front Regional Council. And so so seventy two hundred west is this road here. So this is this road here is twenty first south, and then you have I eighty here. So Wasatch Front Regional Council shows seventy two hundred west is a five lane facility between two oh one and I eighty. So this would just essentially align our plan with what's being planned more regionally for seventy two hundred west. So that's the purpose for that change. And then finally, here's a close up of the change planned here for fifty nine hundred west. As I mentioned, this road here, twenty five forty south is now completed to this point. And then fifty nine hundred west is completed to this point. This project would be south of so this portion here to the south, so connecting twenty five forty down to Parkway. So the purpose for this, and I'll go back to the aerial to help explain this. As you know, we have a lot of industrial development north of twenty five forty south, so all in this area. And you have this, so this again, new road here, twenty five forty. If truck traffic wanted to go southbound on two oh one, right now you do have this road connection here at sixty four hundred west that could come down to Parkway, then head east on Parkway to the interchange. Of course, that would mean you're driving past homes. And so by putting in this connection, it allows any truck traffic that wants to go directly to Mountain View to bypass that and to not have to drive past homes. So it provides a direct access for industrials straight to the interchange at Mountain View. And that that summarizes this application.
Okay, I'll turn it to the counselor. Any questions?
No.
Okay, I have a few.
Sure.
So this connection, I understand it'll help getting the trucks. How do we encourage them or entice them or force them to use it instead of going through the neighbor, the residential area?
I think it's.
Can we do that?
Yeah, I think it's more part of this. This is just a direct connection. So it's a more convenient route. And so that's the part of the thought there is that where you can, you know, essentially get directly on that that becomes more of the a desirable route than taking sixty four hundred.
Okay, so the off ramp will be right there for him?
Correct. Right. So you have, again, remembering that Parkway is only like we call a half interchange where you have, if you're northbound on Mountain View, you can get off and you can go southbound, but there are no ramps on the north side of the road.
So they're going to be encouraged to go out to the two oh one if they want to go northbound?
Correct.
They can take this if they're going southbound.
That's right.
That will be there. Okay. And then the property up there, Lester Street. So a part of that is going through undeveloped or is it all going through developed properties?
So the the only portion that's go back to that image here. So you do have some properties in there that I would loosely term developed. They've been developed, but then some are more vacant at this point. Meaning that there's no, there's no tenant there. There's, for example, this, if you look at the area right here on the east side of Lester Street, right now, there was a salvage business there, but that has since been vacant for a time. But it's mainly this property here, which UDOT actually acquired, but we anticipate at some point them surplusing that property. And then that would be developed. So the area north of the salvage yards.
So are we going to develop this before we own it? Or will it be, or is this just to mainly get it on WFRC so that we can apply for funding?
So it's it's, I think the biggest purpose is that once we have something on a major street plan, if someone then comes in to develop and they need to build around or accommodate for that. And so by doing this, if if we see development on that property, they need to accommodate that road as part of that development.
So really, the only ones we are going to be responsible for putting in is the one that connects with Mountain View? And then the Parkway?
Right, so.
And then the other one over there will be just for development as well?
Right, so this with Lester Street, this again largely would be through development.
Right.
If we look at seventy two hundred west, same similar situation. With this one, the the challenge here is that you don't you already have essentially the school there. And so we don't really have a developer to to put that to. And on the other side, of course, is Mountain View. So this one will likely be the city to develop this at some point.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, you're the next one as well. So we'll move on to application ZPZ seven twenty twenty two.
Thank you. So just shifting PowerPoints here for a minute. All right, so this next application is a request to amend the city's general plan zoning from Wasatch Commercial Developers. And I just point out, we do have from Wasatch, Craig Martin, Matt Reynolds, Barker, and John Dalstrom here with us to listen in. So this property, you can see here on the map, is about forty acres. The location here is forty eight ninety to fifty ninety West Lake Park Boulevard. The zoning on the property right now is largely A two zoning, which is the agricultural zone that requires a minimum lot size of two acres. Plus, we do have one parcel here that's right along the canal waterway here. That's just the A zoning. And the the general plan designation is for large lot residential over this area. So in the requested zoning is the Business Research Park Zone. And we'll talk a bit more about that zone here shortly. And it's then the requested general plan changes for a business park. So just to orient the council here a little bit. So directly to the east, of course, you have the Stonebridge Golf Course and then Lake Park Corporate Center. Then on the south here, you have some office uses here that are part of Lake Park. On the south here, you have property that's vacant, but was entitled a number of years ago for residential. And so I'll show you a concept plan that was submitted as part of that rezone that dates back many years, actually. To the north, you have an industrial development that's just wrapping up. Actually, there's now three buildings here, and I'll show some images of that. And then to the west is, on the other side of this waterway is property that's owned by Granite School District. So just to kind of give you the lay of the land there. So.
Sorry.
Yes.
Monticello is right there, just at the bottom of the screen.
Correct. So if you go a little bit further south here on Corporate Park Drive, you have the school there just to the south. So this is the concept plan that's proposed for this site. It's a biomedical campus, as what's being referred to as. So a total of seven buildings. And the concept plan here would be for five hundred and eighty thousand square feet. So this would be, as proposed, a combination of office space, research and development, manufacturing, warehousing, all that are all related to medical type uses. So one example that is exists currently in Lake Park is you may be familiar with the new company called Nusano, that's being developed in Lake Park. That's on, it's actually on a, I can show you on another slide coming up here where that's located. This next slide just shows conceptually the phasing. If this zoning is approved, how that would be phased. It'd be a multi-phase project. And then this next slide actually was not in the packet I just received today. It's just an updated concept plan that takes into consideration the items that are in the development agreement. So we'll we'll mention we'll here shortly go over those items that are in the development agreement. So this is a more up to date version of their concept plan. So as far as the look of this, they have a number of renderings that we'll walk through here as far as what types of buildings these would be. So I'll show the these. As as we'll talk about in the development agreement, the with these overhead doors, the the idea here is more for vans and box trucks and not largely not semi trucks. So again, another image here of that. So just again, for more reference, we got a number of pictures here. So this is taken, this image is taken from Lake Park Boulevard looking to the north. You can see those three industrial buildings out in the distance that are again getting close to being wrapped up. The mainly the one in the middle was the one that was finishing up. Again, just another view of those. This is the roundabout there that's kind of in the middle of the property to the south. And then looking more to the to the southwest, you can see some of the homes out there in the distance. This is looking west along Lake Park. And then east, where you can see some of the office buildings out in the distance. So this was taken more near the north property line. So you can see there's a essentially a bridge that goes over the canal. We'll talk about that here in a minute. Why the bridge was was installed. Again, just right, you can see the canal here along the north edge of the property in the building that was under construction. Another view to the north. So we wanted to show this image here as well. So this is, this image was taken on the properties to the north, looking to the east. So you have those industrial buildings. And the idea at the time was because the plan was for residential, we wanted to have a buffer, if you will, between the buildings and what would be built on the south side of the canal. So you have just employee parking. So this area here was meant to not be truck parking. There's no overhead docks on this side of the building, right? So all the docks are on the sides of the building. Then you have the masonry wall. And then on the other side of the wall, you have some landscaping and then the the canal itself. So that that separation from the canal to the buildings varies anywhere from about hundred and twenty to two hundred and sixty ish feet, depending on the location. So it's again, meant to be kind of a buffer between the industrial and what at the time was planned for residential use. I mentioned earlier that the property to the south was zoned for residential. So this slide here shows at least the concept plan for that. So it involved, and this goes back to, I believe it was two thousand and eight, it goes way back. But Ivory Homes at the time had proposed some townhomes kind of along the northeast and then some smaller lots, single family kind of around that. And we do still have a development agreement to that end, but clearly it's not been developed as this. So this this site plan just shows you the buildings to the north of the canal. So these are the three industrial buildings that are again, just wrapping up. This image here was provided by the applicant and the the residential designation on this property was put in place back in twenty fifteen at the council's direction. And so they wanted to highlight just some of the commercial and industrial areas that have happened in the general vicinity since that time. So of course, you have the ones, so the property in question is right here. Then you have these buildings here to the north. And then I mentioned earlier, the Nusano project, that's this area here in yellow within Lake Park. So just, I want to provide a little bit of history. I know there's a lot of slides here, but a bit of a back or some background on this property. So prior to twenty fifteen, the city's general plan showed this mixed use area. So that's kind of this blue hatched area. And it was meant to be a mix of residential and commercial back then. And then you had this proposed road connection between Lake Park Boulevard and here we go. So Lake Park Boulevard up to twenty four hundred south. Then it was in twenty fifteen that the council changed the plan so that we had this kind of light industrial, which is the gray area on the north side of the canal. And then this kind of light green was the larger lot residential that was put in place in twenty fifteen. This this circle showed is meant to represent the need for a park somewhere in the in the area. Okay. And then then later in twenty eighteen, we removed that road connection. And again, the thought at the time was, well, if we're going to have residential here, we probably don't want to connect the residential with the industrial. So that that road connection was removed as far as the plan is concerned. Now, shifting to zoning, this again, shows the zoning prior to twenty fifteen. So we had the the gray area was just all manufacturing. So this property, as well as pretty much everything to the east, north and west of it was zoned manufacturing. And then in twenty fifteen, again, the council rezoned this property as well as the property to the west to the A two zone with again, the intent eventually being some residential use on that property. Just a couple more items for background here. So this just shows that there is a bus route that goes through Lake Park, but it has very limited service. So it's more early morning, late afternoon or evening, but not a not a consistent service. Although there are plans in Wasatch Front Regional Council does have plans longer term to have a more consistent route that would drive through Lake Park and eventually connect into Salt Lake City. So I just thought that would be helpful background. I wanted to point out, maybe we'll go back to the the concept plan here. There we go. So there is, in conjunction with this application, a general or a development agreement. And just touch on what those those proposed standards would be. So the the first one, this is in the exhibit B of the development, is there's a limit on the number of semi truck docks that could be in this project. And so with the proposal being a biomedical campus and not your typical distribution warehouse, we wanted to have some limitations on the number of semi truck docks. And so if you, the way we looked at this is we said, okay, based on the square footage of buildings here, if this were just a standard distribution warehouse, it would have about ninety truck docks. Okay? And that would be, for example, our the our development or two oh one commerce, some of those very large tilted up concrete buildings. Given the square footage here, you would have ninety truck docks. What's proposing the agreement is eighteen. So that's essentially twenty percent of what you would typically see in a in a just a, again, a distribution warehouse type scenario. Now, they will still have docks on the buildings. They just would be designed more for vans or box trucks, so more of those overhead door type situations and not not for semi trucks. So the intent there was to again, keep it more of this, again, biomedical focus and not have it be just just another where, you know, distribution warehouse, not that there's not that that's a bad use. It's just this this use is would would have less semi truck traffic if it's more focused towards biomedical type uses. The second point is that there's a a minimum square footage of office, research space, lab space, and what's called clean rooms. And that would be forty percent of the the total project. So clean rooms would be a manufacturing process where there's heavier environmental controls, right? So it's not just manufacturing in just an open warehouse type setting, but you have climate controls and maybe even people in suits or things like that, where it's it's something that it's a little bit more sensitive in terms of manufacturing. So again, trying to trying to get at that biomedical use as opposed to just general warehousing or industrial in in that second point. The third would be that that they would build the buildings in line with the renderings that are that we've shown here. So those renderings that I showed are in the development agreement. And they would also meet our commercial design standards. The fourth point would be that along that waterway, they would have at least a twenty five foot setback from the waterway to any parking or driveways. And then the fifth item is, as you all know, that throughout throughout Lake Park, there are numerous walkways and trails through Lake Park. And so and we, as staff suggested, there be a walkway that goes around the perimeter of this. And so that's item five would be having a walkway that essentially wraps around the perimeter of this this property. And then finally, the last item in the development agreement is the removal of the bridge. So as I mentioned years ago, the plan was to have a road connecting Lake Park Boulevard all the way up to twenty four hundred south. Now that you have industrial use on the north side, that that's all developed, that possibility essentially was closed once that developed as industrial. And so the developer, under this scenario, would remove that bridge. So it basically, it's no longer needed at this point. So that that summarizes the the development agreement. In the in the meeting minutes, there are a number of other items that were discussed as part of this, but I know I've I've talked for a while already, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Just quick one to the presentation, Steve. The the property to the south that you were talking about, the old entitlement in two thousand and eight.
Yes.
I can't remember who actually holds title to it now. Is it SLR or is it Ivory?
Neither, actually. So so that property was actually acquired by Wasatch.
Oh, okay. So they on the south of this as well?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Steve, so that's going to be I C company, I mean, I see here local, you're going to do that or just and just rent it out to anybody?
So as far as the development's concerned, Wasatch would actually do the do the development. And as far as tenants go, they've been in or had conversations with a number of different companies. So one being not a company, but the University of Utah, where they have the research park in the east side and having some of that element here in West Valley. Also, where you have Nusano, the company I mentioned earlier, they actually manufacture radio isotopes. I'm not, I don't completely understand the science behind that, but there are other companies that would like to be in proximity of of Nusano to work work with them. And so it'd be companies like that that are expressing interest in a project like this.
This this seems like something that we've worked really well on the north end of Lake Park, where we have some more manufacturing type things. Is this kind of the, this would be unusual on the south end? I don't, I drive in Lake Park all the time. I don't know if there's any other manufacturing on the south.
So there are a few, if we go to go to that larger image here. Here we go. So maybe a little bit of background within Lake Park proper. So from about, you know, this area here, the west side of the golf course over to Park or to, excuse me, to Bangor Highway, there's about fifty three acres left that that have yet to develop. And in fact, Wasatch approached those landowners about potentially buying buying property. Wasatch has developed some new office buildings, but also they're they're the ones developing Nusano. So you do have Nusano is kind of, again, this hybrid, if you will, where it's again, they have office space, but they also do manufacturing, but it's more medical manufacturing and not your typical typical manufacturing. So you do have that use. They're also working with another medical manufacturer type use on this parcel here that's in yellow, that's not not yet public. So there are at least a couple in that area that are, again, this kind of more medical manufacturing office use within Lake Park.
So Steve, when everyone was developing the residential on the west end of this development, there were concessions given for high density, knowing that this would be larger lots. So that kind of takes away from that town home condo smaller lots to, this was going to be our big lot. Smaller lots to, this was going to be our big lot component, and we don't have a lot of residential estate type. Property left. So is there a good justification to throwing out our large lots?
So maybe the best way I could need to answer that is back in back in twenty fifteen, there was about. Uh at the time, seven hundred and forty acres of whatever called in terms of area that the council downzoned at the time, right? So there was uh the the thought process with the council at the time was, you know, the the amount of land, available land is shrinking. We want to be able to preserve the opportunity for um more larger uh larger lot, larger home development. So this property along with another seven hundred acres roughly, a property was downzoned for that. We've seen some that's that's been they have pursued that. Uh, and and I'm happy to, if it's helpful for the council, maybe show what was what was done clear back in twenty fifteen. And kind of what the outcome has been of what's what's changed, what hasn't changed since then. So I I guess that that's really the the question here is if. Uh, given the the goal back in twenty fifteen, if we feel like that's been met, if the council still has the same goal or if. Um, uh, that should be somehow different.
See, and I'm talking. Back when I was on planning commission, so in two thousand six, you know, we as a master plan for this whole area. Was, okay, we'll give you some high density here as long as low density is built here. And so I felt like they got all their high density and now we're going to allow them to not finish off the project as it was presented to us at the very first. It's kind of like a bait and switch and I'm. Not as happy with that part. And then we have two elementary schools, um one just to the east and one just to the west of this property. Um constrer congestion is already a problem there, especially when schools.
Right.
Getting out and beginning. And so this area is really congested a lot of the time. So I don't know if that many more office complex. What traffic would be appropriate at that far west end instead of keeping it east of forty eighth, like pretty much everything else is. And then the development agreement, I guess I have issue with similar to the renderings. I mean, I like the glass garage doors and all the glass. I would hate to have them substantially change it up. I mean, change it at all. I like the renderings as they are if we move forward with it. So how do we know that down so we don't not get what we're looking for?
Sure. We use that language substantially like because at this stage, um we're dealing with renderings. And and don't have actual construction drawings. Typically, kind of the uh the genesis of a project is if the zoning is approved, then they start working on construction drawings. And so uh from from a an architect's rendering to actual construction drawing, sometimes they will make some some changes. Just to uh to reflect what can actually be constructed. Uh, but we again, our 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 objective is really trying to match what they've shown in the renderings um with the construction drawings.
Okay. And then um some of the businesses east of forty eighth have had issue with. The residents walking in the sidewalks around their actual buildings. They don't mind them staying on the sidewalks on the actual street, but when you get around discovering different ones, they're having issues. Would there be an issue here with these sidewalks? Would the residents still be able to walk their dogs and whatever else in this around the complex?
Great point. So right now, the the agreement doesn't contemplate uh or doesn't spell out public access. That's something we could explore with them to see if they're open to uh uh some kind of a public easement, at least on the walkways. But right now, it's uh it it's not spelled out.
Okay. And they don't have any waterways on this property, correct?
Not do not, it's just they're adjacent, they're just adjacent, but not actually on the property.
Okay.
And maybe just one other point to the uh to the traffic. Um, so they did submit and and it's in the pack of the traffic study, so just just FYI.
Yeah, I did see that, but trap, you know, profit studies and then real life are two different things and I don't know. Cause there is a lot of issues with traffic in that area. And it's mainly the two schools faults. I'll blame it where it goes. So. Okay, um and then this will be on the agenda. We're having two different study sessions on this one.
That's correct.
So you can come back with information.
And so um so as far as kind of follow up, we can ask about uh the sidewalk as far as public access to the to the sidewalk. Um, are there other specific things you'd like me to to follow up on there?
No, just how close they're gonna stay to the renderings.
You mentioned the report on on how our our land use, the ones that we had. Thought might go large lot residential, how that's going in the city since twenty fifteen. And can that be brought to us?
That will be helpful. Anybody else?
Yeah, one more man. Um, so of course you you went through with the planning commission. Is there any people in the south side of that area, they they come here and then come land or anything about this project?
Uh, they did not. Yeah, I I don't recall a planning commission having any of the the public come to to the meeting. We did have a couple uh planning commissioners uh that did not did not support or did not vote for it. Um, so it the the planning commission overall did recommend approval. One concern was just uh from one of the commissioners was the size of the buildings relative to some of the other buildings in Lake Park. And the other was just again, the the residential, um you know, preferring residential over what's proposed.
Thank you.
Can you um let us know how many notices were actually sent out to the residents? Because it's only three hundred feet from the property line. And I'm not sure how many actual residents in that area would get a notice.
Right. So with with the three hundred feet, there there would not have been just because, you know, just looking at the distances here, the the homes would have been outside that three hundred feet.
So none of the residents in this area have been notified of this?
Right.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move to our resolutions. We have resolution twenty two dash one fifty eight. And I'll turn the time over to Eric Madsen to begin.
Ma'am, can I uh make some comment in terms of that? This isn't about, yeah, no problem. This isn't about the two trucks particularly. This is more about uh kind of the reason. Or the approach we're having for the trucks and this particular purchase. So as a council will remember over the last few months, we have brought various lead purchases to you. And then we can't get cars and manufacturers or have an issue delivering. They don't open up their order windows like they normally have.
We're still not going to guarantee anything.
Yeah, right.
For a couple of years, right?
Right, right. Yeah, we don't know. I mean, literally, they've told us uh Ford at least that we won't even have an order in July, if I remember right. But the other piece of that that's important is that keeps changing too. So we don't know for sure. Maybe we'll have another order window open up next month. We don't know. So anyway, the reason that's important in this particular purchase is that even though these are planned and these are needed and they're ones we want for sanitation purposes. We can't actually get them right now. We're just coming to you to get permission for the purchase so that when the order window does come available. We're able to, and then I'm not coming back to you guys saying, hey, I got this forty eight hour window that opened up and I need to order these right now. So that's kind of the preface to the.
Okay, planning.
Okay, the first truck we got is a two thousand seven Azuzu. It's a flatbed with a a lift on it and that's used for sanitation. They haul out the garbage cans, uh deliver them, pick them up, repair them. Uh, it's got a hundred and thirty three thousand miles on it, so it's definitely in need. The next truck is, the council has approved the bucket part of this truck. So we ordered that about a year ago. So this has really been, I've been sweating this because I hear that Ford is going to have a change body style and everything. And we already own the bucket part of it. So we're hoping to get that replaced. That's a two thousand eight. And it's it's seen better days. It's it's ready for that one to be replaced. So we're hoping that, well, what we've been told this week was it's going to open uh on the twenty eighth of November to order for two days. But there is no guarantee. So we just wanted to be ready just in case we can slide it in. So we just needed your approval for that.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Will this approval be in time? Is this something we're approving tonight?
No, but and if I wasn't even aware that 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 particular order window was.
It just changed.
Which I I yeah, realized, but my main concern was just that you wouldn't hear it. So that I wasn't in the position of having to call you and say, hey, I got forty eight hours to order. This is a okay to do it now and you guys approve it later. So at least here, you have heard about it and you know, in principle, you can tell us whether you want us to do it or not if you have, if you're so inclined.
We've even looked for used, you know, slightly used vehicles and, I mean, they're they're charging twenty thousand more than what we would be buying them off. State contract for used equipment now. So if we can slide it in, it would be great.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Whitestone, you have a question?
Well, I was just curious, is the so the bucket's currently not being used, correct? It's not on the thirty five hundred Dodge.
The one that we've re that we ordered, no, it's at the manufacturer.
But what's the two thousand eight Dodge being used for right now? There's not a bucket on it, right?
Yeah, it's a a bucket truck, a complete truck and the bucket lift.
The smaller version of the bucket or is it the same bucket that we purchased last year?
Same bucket.
Okay.
So I have the, so you're saying the previous truck has a hundred and thirty thousand miles? So will these trucks be stored in stores or outdoors with the remodel of public works?
That would be Dan, but I believe they would be indoors.
So. Why not spend another twenty thousand, get a diesel that goes two hundred and fifty thousand?
It's really on the bucket part of it, Mayor. It's it's weight on the front end. I tried to do the diesel, but then they kicked it back from engineering saying that the the axle weight is too heavy. With the bucket and equipment that hangs over the cab.
Okay.
That it would be too heavy, so.
So they make, they manufacture the diesel different than the gas?
Oh, yeah, we are. And the weight is a ton different.
Really?
So, yeah, I, we did check into that. I was going to do that, but.
Okay. Good to know. Cause there's a four fifty and a five fifty, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. I really thought the diesel thing would be Will's question, not mine. All right, um we'll now move to resolution twenty two dash one fifty nine. To uh consider the resolution to end the employment agreement with Mr. Pyle. Is there any questions, concerns?
So the wording um is to. To decline to renew an employment agreement, right?
We're given the hundred and eighty day notice, yeah.
And our intention is to to negotiate a new contract with Mr. Pyle. Early, early in this hundred eighty day time period.
Yeah, and legal has to do something.
In June.
Right. Yep, and legal has some things they have to do first and then we can move on that way. Okay. Seeing nothing else there. Who is doing this one? Kobe, that's why Kobe's here. So Mr. Wilson will give us a. Capital improvement update.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, good to be with you um to provide you an update on some of the projects the city's been working on over the past year. Uh, the projects that we're going to be talking about today are either under construction right now or in design, hoping to start construction in twenty twenty three. If there are any exceptions to that, then I'll note that as we're going through these. But we're just going to use our um capital improvement project uh map that's on our website for the public to see as we go through and talk about these. Um, feel free to stop me and ask me any questions as I go through here. Um, otherwise, I'll just start hitting these, hitting these projects. So some of these projects, um as we come to the end of a construction season this year, um within the last month have have reached uh completion. Um, we have substantial completion or physical completion as we go through here and as I talk about that, I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. But substantial completion just means ma- the major items of work are done. Um, the facility can be used to whatever the interest of the. Uh, the facility is. Um, from that point, they have a certain time to do punch list items and any other minor minor items. Once those items are all complete and it goes into warranty, that is physical completion. So as I reference those two as we go through here, that's what what I'm talking about. But the first project here, uh Beasley Road, um this is um related to uh Mr. Pastrick's presentation earlier. We just completed the extension of Beasley Road um up to twenty four hundred south. Um, this project reached physical completion last week, so this is going to be dropping off of this list uh now. But um we're excited to have that done. This actually provides us a connection now from seventy two hundred west all the way. Well, really now you can get all the way, you know, up to the front of the road or to Mountain View Cora. Or there's, there's a lot of different uh options now that we have that entire roadway completes. We're excited to have that one complete. Um, this uh this interface for the public, it does provide an estimate, the funding sources and so forth. The projects that we're going to talk about today are just under seventy million dollars for the projects that we are currently working on. Obviously, we pursued several different funding sources for those between state and county and federal funds. Of that seventy million, about twenty five million is funded by West Valley City. Um, but we have about thirty million of federal funds. Uh, ten million of county funds, um five million of state funds. So we we pull, we do the best we can to pursue multiple different funding sources for these projects. Um, moving down through here, the twenty seven hundred west improvement project, this is the one from forty one hundred south to forty seven hundred south. This one just reached substantial completion this week. They have a few punch list items to wrap up out there, but this project uh is wrapping up. Um, this was a joint project with UTA as part of the Tiger Grant Funds that they applied for and received. Moving down to our forty seven hundred south construction project, you've heard about this one multiple times throughout the, we'll say, years. This has been a long time in the making. If you've been out there lately, it definitely looks a little bit different. They have it torn up and. Construction is very active right now. So um this winter, they will be working on underground utilities. And getting all the storm drain in and hopefully getting started on the privacy wall on the west end of that of that project. If as they work through utility conflicts there. Again, this is a joint project with the county, um well with uh Kearns Metro Township. Um, and we are hoping that the majority of the construction wraps up this next construction season. Um, a smaller project, this was a safe sidewalk project here on thirty five hundred south, out by fifty two hundred west. We applied for state funds for this for their, from their safe sidewalk program. And we were able to complete a little gap of sidewalk here by fifty two hundred west. Um, one project that's not on here, uh we just applied for. Um, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional safe sidewalk money to be used on for uh thirty five hundred south. Out closer to sixty eight hundred west. Um, we were awarded that funding, but UDOT has a much bigger project on thirty five hundred south. Where they're going to be trying to fill in some sidewalk gaps along there. And so just due to economies of scale with that project, we're going to basically allow that money to be put into the UDOT project. So that we can get better pricing for some of that sidewalk. But um that's a fairly recent development. And uh again, that will be a UDOT project, hoping to see construction start on that sometime late, late next summer. Um, the Ped Ramp Projects, we had two different Ped Ramp Projects, one that had CDBG funding and the other one that was just funded by. Uh, local transportation money. These projects both reached substantial completion this month. Um, so actually, they reached physical completion last week. So these projects are now are now complete and in warranty for the next year. So that's for the CDBG project as well as this twenty twenty two pedestrian uh ramp project. And those were just for pedestrian access ramps in multiple different locations throughout the city.
So can I ask one question?
You bet.
So just in my neighborhood alone, this is the third set of pedestrian ramps. In twenty. twenty, twenty-five years? So is this going to be the final? I mean, is the feds going to stop changing their handicap ramp restrictions and having us redo them over and over and over?
I'd like to tell you yes, um, but I'm not going to make a guarantee on that one. So it's definitely a moving target, um. And sometimes it's not even federal policy to fill certain positions that oversees the policy and different interpretations. So it does get very challenging, um. But we'll keep our fingers crossed, but I'm not going to promise you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Feel your frustration.
Yeah, I kept it mild, so. Thirty one hundred south, this is our storm drain slash overlay project on thirty one hundred south. Per their contract, they were required to get everything east of forty eight hundred, uh, west done this year. They made a valid attempt to get it all done this year, but during the storm drain installation, they ran into some utility conflicts that really slowed them down. So unfortunately, they, um, were not able to complete. They have demobilized and they will return in the spring to wrap up this project next year.
That one, I can tell you, I'm highly impressed how quick they got that one done. And all the residents around there has commented of how well they did and how quick they did it, so.
Yeah, we've been pleased with their performance. We were a little bit nervous with, um, them starting so late, um, and with the pandemic and with, uh, supply chain issues, it's very hard for us to enforce contract deadlines right now. Um, so we were a little bit nervous, but they did come in and they brought multiple crews and we were impressed with how fast they, they were able to get that done. And really, if it wouldn't have been for unforeseen utility conflicts, they probably would have had a really good chance of wrapping up this year, but all ped ramps throughout the entire project are complete, even on the, the west end. So that should help for a quick completion in the spring.
So the only complaint I got, and it's mainly a safety issue, is right there at four thousand. It was two lanes and it continued two lanes through the light. And then it merged in. And now the bike lane is there. So once you can only turn right at four thousand, but people aren't catching on to that and they're still going through. So the fall, there hasn't been that much biking, but people have noticed that they're keeping the old pattern. And in the spring and summer, when those bikes are mobile, there might be some safety issues with that one.
No, that's, that's a valid concern. Yep.
I wonder if we didn't need more signage or what we need.
No, that's a valid concern. And obviously, when we, we shift traffic patterns like that, there's a learning curve as well for the public. So hopefully the winter gives us time to to kind of adopt that learning curve and we'll, we'll readdress it in the spring and, and maybe look at it and see if we need some additional signage or what other options there may be.
Thanks.
Kobe, how much, uh, corrugated? Metal pipe did we get replaced? Was it the whole length of the project or only parts of it?
No, most of it, and that actually was tied to our contract deadlines. Most of it is west of forty eight hundred west, um, which is why we, we thought we'd have to be flexible with that deadline. Um, footage wise, I can't remember the exact footage wise, we're about seven hundred thousand dollars in, in the storm drain replacement, um, but most of that is on the west end. Um, that they'll be back to in the spring. This next one is just our thin surface treatment, um, that we typically do every summer, either a slurry seal or a polymer, um, surfacing or um, a micro surfacing project. So we're still kind of identifying the roads for that next year, but there will be a, a project next year that gets those treatments. Crosstown Trail Project. So this photo on the left is actually of a previous phase up over two fifteen, but this phase of the Crosstown Trail will be from twenty seven hundred west. Um, essentially to Bangator, um, the major improvements will stop at thirty six hundred west, just due to future Bangator work that might impact any additional improvements as we go further west. But, um, nonetheless, this will fill in all the sidewalk gaps that we're missing, add bike lanes, um, to the corridor, um, and extend. Um, basically that, uh, the user access for pedestrians and bicyclists at two thirty six hundred west. So this one has some federal funding and we also got some, uh, county transportation funds to help with the construction of this project. It's in design right now. Um, this one is being designed in-house with city resources and um, we hope to get it under construction, um, late twenty twenty-three. It's just going to be contingent upon how fast we can acquire right away and how willing the, the property owners are to work with us, so. Next way Parkway Boulevard widening. So this is widening on Parkway Boulevard between sixty four hundred west and Mountain View Corridor. This will widen this out to a five lane, um, corridor, um, with bike lanes. As well as the reconstruct, it's a whole depth reconstruction, so it'll be a brand new pavement section, new curb gutter sidewalk. Um, brand new road, the design is at ninety percent right now. Um, we were hoping to construct this in twenty twenty-three. It's going to be the same, same condition. There are a lot of property, well, we have about thirty different owners that we have to work with to get to sign documents. So if that can go quickly, then hopefully we can see some construction start in twenty twenty-three. Um, once we get the right away cleared, we'll just have to kind of assess the bidding environment. And if we feel like it's wise to bid at that time or to postpone until next fall when we think we can get better pricing, so. Uh, that decision will be kind of contingent upon when we clear right away.
Did we get funds from WFRC after that one?
Yep, good question. So current estimate on this project right now is about eleven million dollars. When we applied for WFRC, uh, money from their STP program. We got just over five, just shy of six million dollars a few years ago. Um, we recently, just a couple of months ago, or maybe just a month ago, actually went in and requested a board modification for another two million, one point nine million dollars, and they did approve that. So we have an extra two million dollars coming to us from WFRC. So that will take their contribution up to about seven million. Um, the remaining four will be West Valley City's responsibility. All right, Lancer Way reconstruction. Um, this is one that we know will not start construction next year. It'll probably be hopefully twenty twenty-four, um. And that, again, that's pushing it. It's just, it always comes down to right away and, and how willing people are to work with us. And if we get into any type of threat of condemnation that delays us, um. But we are shooting for a twenty twenty-four construction, uh, schedule. This is the full reconstruction of Lancer Way from twenty seven hundred west uh, to thirty two hundred west. Um, we will get, uh, bike lanes on the corridor, um, again, full depth, new pavement, new curb gutter sidewalk, um. The whole works on Lancer Way, so. This one is, the environmental document has been cleared on this, and we are actually in the process right now of selecting a consultant to help with the design. Um, that request for proposals went out last week, so we should be selecting a designer within the next, I think the first week of December is when we select the, the designer for this project.
Have we thought about going to thirty-six or what's the, I mean, money, I'm sure is the.
Yep. Money, money's the, the problem there. Um, we'd love to go to thirty-six. Um, the bigger need right now is the thirty-two, just with drainage problems and um, just the south side lacks all curb and gutter and sidewalk, but there's needs to thirty-six as well. Right now, it's just funding constraints, so.
Did we get any help with funding on that one?
So this is actually a very unique project. Um, this will be the first project we've ever done where the city right now is not on the hook for anything. So um, we received about, oh, six million, five and a half million dollars of federal STP money. And then we recently just got another two and a half million dollars of, uh, TTF money, transportation, uh, transit, transportation investment funds. So uh, those are state funds, STP money and federal funds. And so we've worked with UDOT to try to convince them to allow us to use the state funds to be our match for the federal funds and the federal funds to be our match for the state funds. Um, and working with them a little bit, they said that we could do that, so that is what we're doing. So as long as we stay under the eight million dollars right now, um, this one will be free to West Valley, other than the pain and suffering while they're constructing it. But financially, we're in good shape on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, twenty twenty-three overlay, we have identified the roads of which we'll get an overlay. There are these ones here in the orange. Um, down by Meadow Brook, just west of thirty-two, and then in the Roxboro area on the east side of thirty-two, this will be our Mill and Phil project for, uh, next summer. Uh, sixty-eight hundred west pond overflow project. This is a stormwater project. Um, we have some facilities out here that are very difficult to maintain. Um, we have a large drainage structure that goes from, you know, this, uh, I guess we'll call it a pond right now, but it's, uh, not very well tamed because we have very limited access to this pond right now. So um, part of this project is to acquire some right away to get us better access. We can get equipment back in there to maintain this more, uh, uh, properly. Um, we're also going to need to upsize a culvert that goes underneath the roadway here, um, just so that we can get that stormwater conveyance where it needs to be. So this will be a project that we are currently designing and hope to construct this next summer. And then finally, you've probably seen a little bit of activity out on forty one hundred south near, uh, Montea Drive Avenue, Montea, just west of, of twenty seven hundred west as well as Accord, um, Avenue. So we are putting in new pedestrian crossing facilities, uh, there to help with the, the pedestrian movement across forty one hundred south. The county is helping us out with this. They're doing it with county, uh, resources. And so we have an agreement with the county to get out there and, and do that. And we are uh, participating financially with that, so. And that is a report on our projects we're currently working on. So are there any other questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Well, I'll just say, thank you for combining efforts and getting us the best deal for monies. And then I'll turn it to council. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. Uh. We got approval for, uh, sidewalk from Crystal Avenue to Lassus Street a few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have need to do that or have to keep question back every year.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question. So the funds that we received from the state were safer out to school funds, um, to do some sidewalk on Crystal just east of Lester. We were informed a few months ago that a federal audit of that program with the state. The state had not been spending those funds exactly according to the guidelines with federal dollars. As a result, they had to pause that program and they called back any funding that had been issued for those projects. So right now, we're on hold until the, uh, as far as the safer out to school program, it is on hold until the state and the feds get together to figure out how they need to be in more compliance with that. Um, and then, yeah, so right now it's just kind of a holding pattern, see what gets worked out.
So Kobe, I haven't heard any update on how long that might take or any feel for that. Have you heard anything further? Or are we still just kind of in a holding?
Unfortunately, we're still in the holding pattern right now. We haven't heard any updates on the program.
And just as a reminder, how much money was that for this project?
Uh, I think it was three hundred thousand, if I remember right.
There are other ways to do that if the council wanted to prioritize that. We could use CDBG money instead and reprogram it. We could use, uh, our fund balance money as well, but currently, like Kobe says, yes, the money from that sources. Is, uh, delayed, stalled.
Do we have a, a list of future projects, sidewalk and, and lights? That we could review and help prioritize maybe as a council?
The sidewalk project list is online right now in order of what it's, uh, projected at. It's all newly updated as of about eight weeks ago, something like that. So, yeah, and, and anybody, including the public, can look on there and you could say, hey, I like this better or whatever, but given the criteria that we've assigned to that, that shows how they're ranked.
How about lights?
Uh, lights, I'm not as familiar with, but you have any?
And lights, I'd probably have to defer to Dan on that one.
Uh, lights, we're actually going to bring you a contract in coming weeks for our first kind of big, uh, street light efforts. It's, I think, thirty-five lights or so we're installing on streets, just don't have them, period. And then, um, we're working on, we're getting a plan of, you know, it, it's really easy to decide where there's no lights, let's put lights in. Um, and we've still got a lot of those areas, you know, and if the council wanted to offer feedback, we'd gladly put that in front of the council and you can give us feedback on, on what you, what we feel ought to be priorities. But after the, you know, the, the, the dark places have been filled in, um, then we need to decide what the priority is on, on what types of lights to replace. And you've got thousands literally of, of old town and countries with direct burial there. You know, they're about thirty years old with wire directly buried into the, in the dirt that are you know, impossible to maintain and wired to the pad. And so that's a good place to start, but, but we don't have anything necessarily prepared that we can hand to council and say, this is the plan that's ready to review. If you'd like, we could certainly prepare something. That, uh, that gives us, or at least, I don't know, gives us some direction on what your preferences ought to be with, with how we attack the street lighting challenges.
Lots to choose from.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it looks like Mr. Whitestone has a question?
Uh, yeah, just going back to, um, Wayne's comment about using other funds to to start on the sidewalk projects, um, would we get reimbursed from state to school funds if we were to do that, or is it just at our own discretion, we would use our own funds?
That'd be at our own discretion. Once we went in and started our own project that way. Um, unless there's some facet of the agreement that I'm aware of, Kobe, that you could tell me that, yeah, we'd be on our own on that one, Will.
Correct.
Okay, any further questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, we now have a review of the professional standards review board. And we have Ms. Mingon online. She's coming. Sorry. It's much easier than driving her.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, and we can see you too, Abby.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for letting me, uh, join you tonight. I apologize in advance, or I apologize for my absence. I haven't seen you all for, for quite some time. So with that, um, hello to our new mayor, Lane, I guess. Not new anymore. And also to, uh, council members, Whitestone and Harmon. Um, and then hello again to council members, Gwen, Fiducie Manu, Christiansen Norfelt, and of course, Mr. Pyle. Um, seeing that this is my first, uh, presentation to you, um, council members, Whitestone and Harmon. Um, I'd like to give you just a really quick overview about what PSRB is and then, um, offer an opportunity to answer any questions that you might have before I dive into these statistics over the last year. Um, so PSRB is the Professional Standards Review Board. It was created by ordinance, I believe it was nineteen ninety-two. So it's been some time since we've created PSRB. Um, it is the Citizen Oversight Board for the West Valley Police Department, and I believe it was the first in the state, um, that was created. We are now one of three citizen oversight boards, um, and in my humble opinion, we're probably the best. Um, our, our construct is a little bit different from Salt Lake City PD, who also has, uh, an oversight board and South Salt Lake PD, which also has an oversight board, which is relatively new. Um, every use of force, display of force, uh, firearm discharge and pursuit are referred to PSRB for um, a determination as to whether the use of force pursuit, um, or whatever the action may be was within policy. Um, we're not talking about a criminal if it's, uh, if it complies with Utah law. We're just wondering if it complies with the policy that the West Valley City Police Department has put forth. That's all we're reviewing it for. Sometimes we do go outside the scope, um, as I'm sure you will have heard or will hear in the future. Um, we are a little bit liberal with the way that we read, um, our purpose and for that, I don't apologize because I believe that with what PSRB does, we've created um, a, a better relationship between the community and the police department. Um, based off of some of our feedback that we've had over the last, I want to say ten years. I think that's how long I've been on the board. Um, we've effectuated some changes within policy that I think better serves our public. Um, and I'll be happy to go into those details if you have any questions about that. Um, but just, but just very generally speaking, that's the, that's the scope that we have as PSRB. Um, we have our monthly meetings every second Thursday of the month. We start our monthly meetings with a public section. Um, in the ten years that I've been doing this, I think only one person from the public has ever appeared at our public section or session. Um, so our public sessions are very, very quick. They last about two minutes. And then we go into a closed session, which lasts much longer. Um, I think that we can go anywhere from two hours to a really short meeting to four to five or really long meetings. So we're usually, um, somewhere in between that, three or four hours is, is pretty typical. Um, on average, we're reviewing about a hundred and eighty cases every month. Um, the way that we define cases now is different from the way that we used to define cases when I first started. When I first started, we would take every incident as a whole. So if there were like, say, five, um, officers who are involved in the incident, then we would consider it one case because it was one incident. Now we require our officers to present, um, their narratives and their, uh, summary of their uses of force as a standalone. So I'm not looking at an officer's and relying on another officer's report to bolster, um, the Officer A. Um, Officer A's report has his down on his own. He has, he or she has to be able to articulate, um, the reasons for the use of force. the reasons for the use of force without relying on on what other officers observed. So that's relatively new. We have met every month since last year, with the exception of of November, we didn't have a quorum in November. Currently, we have seven members. I believe that we are going to be down to six. I don't recall what the ordinance requires in terms of our membership requirements. But we do always like to have an uneven number. So that if we ever have a debate or dispute over whether or not we believe something is in force or or sorry, in policy or out of policy, then we have that quintessential tiebreaker. I can tell you it's never happened. There are cases where we will discuss for a lengthy amount of time before we will submit a non-unanimous decision from PSRB. As you can probably imagine, most of our cases go pretty quick. And that the bulk of our the bulk of our meetings usually involve maybe three or four cases that really require our attention and discussion. We receive a copy of the police reports about a week before our meetings. And depending on how lengthy the police reports are, how many cases we have, it can take anywhere between. I don't know. I think maybe for me, the quickest I've ever gone through my cases is four hours. It can take much longer than that. We are now moving to a new a new program where we will be able to review video from home with our with our reports. So that's new for us. Previously, we were only able to watch our videos in our PSRB meetings. But that's going to change and hopefully cut down the time that we are spending in our meetings and answer a lot of questions that we might have. And then just in in our discussions in our meetings. As part of PSRB, kind of an unofficial part of our PSRB obligations or duties is to participate in officer trainings. Over the last year, we have participated in active shooter trainings, the EVO training, pit training, firearm training, scenario trainings. And then we also do, I think that we've had two people who have attended the Citizens Academy. And then we had two people just recently go to the NACOL conference. NACOL is the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. We've been sending participants or our board members to NACOL for I want to say this is our fifth year doing that. And it gives us an opportunity to see how other municipalities how their oversight boards are running. Take take suggestions back to our board to see if there's anything that we can do differently, do better as we grow. And and always keeping in mind that we are Kalia certified and making sure that we are keeping up to date with the best evidence-based practices. We also receive regular case law updates from Brad Jepson, who is our advisor to to the committee. So if there's ever a case that comes out of the tenth circuit or from any of the Utah courts, the Supreme Court in Utah that refer relate to uses of force by police officers, he always makes sure that we are up to date with that, just as the officers are. So that we're keeping pace with them and the developments in the policy case law and in practices. So with that being said, that was my very quick brains up of what PSRB does. Are there any questions that you all have that I can answer before I jump into these statistics from the last year?
I don't see any here. Go ahead.
Perfect. Let me share my screen. I know that we've been doing Zoom for the last two years, but I swear it never gets as easy or as fast as I want it to be. Okay, can you see my screen with?
Yes.
Yes, and we also have it on our iPads. So.
Oh, good. Perfect. Then I won't spend too much time on these. Let's see. So we'll start with October through December twenty twenty one. As I stated earlier, this is the only this is the only time where we didn't meet three times in the quarter, and that was November again, because we didn't meet a quorum. But you'll see that our December numbers reflect a slight uptick in the numbers that we in the number of cases that we reviewed. You'll see that in October, we reviewed a hundred and fifty five, a hundred and fifty nine cases, a hundred and fifty five that we found in policy for that we sent back for more info. There is a slight uptick to accommodate for that November. And then you'll also see that we also have a slightly higher number in January and February. Our executive assistant, Rachel White, is so kind. She always tries to make sure that we're not super overwhelmed with the cases that we get and tries to meter them out for us. But you'll see that in December, January and February, those three, those three following months that we had slightly higher case number, but that's not anything we're not accustomed to. So as I said, we review every use of force that includes OC pursuits, physical show, force firearm use, K nine taser baton. We don't see a lot of baton. I saw, I think, my first baton last month, which was kind of crazy. We didn't really expect to see that. Forced entries only if there's somebody who's hiding out in the room or the residents that they're trying to to breach. If it's a standard community care breach of a door, then we don't consider that a forced entry.
Abby, can you slide your screen down so we can see the bottom?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Perfect.
So the only case, so I I told you that the cases that we review, we review them on an individual by individual. You'll see here that we have SWAT warrant service. Those are the only cases that we don't review individually. We will review an entire SWAT team's case as one case is one incident. I don't know why we do that, but that's the way it's been done. With the SWAT, if they are involved with a joint task force, if it's a joint task force where they've got federal agents who are also involved, we will not have access to video because that's the only only time that our officers are not allowed to have video, and that's a privacy concern. And that's something that the federal government has implemented and enforces on their officers and on our officers if we're involved. Does anybody have any questions about this slide? Let me explain this one, the setback for more info. There will be times where an officer's report is not clear. Generally speaking, we like to have the officers, the reports stand on their own because of the objectivity that we that we that we prefer when an officer writes his reports. If we find that an officer's report is lacking in detail or uses phraseology that we're trying to get them to step away from, such as escorting a person to the ground. That really doesn't mean anything to us. What we want them to do is really explain the actions or the the use of force that they had to use in order to gain compliance on a non-compliant subject. And so if we find in a report that it can't stand alone on the written report itself without the support of a video or another officer's report, then we'll send it back to the officer and ask them right to write a supplemental narrative. We, when we first started doing that, we will say that we sent a lot back. We are sending fewer and fewer back every month. Now, of course, that changes whenever you have new officers who are coming in. Because our training differs from from post in a good way. And so as our officers become more accustomed to writing the types of reports that we think citizens would like to see, then we're then they are better about writing them. Complaints reviewed, we didn't review any in October through December of twenty twenty one. Complaints are generally complaints that come in through IR. Oh, now I'm gonna not remember what the acronym is. It's the Internal Affairs Committee, maybe it's IAC. So we're not looking at every single complaint that comes in against an officer. So a citizen's complaint that comes in through either the web portal or somebody walks into the fishbowl and makes a complaint about an officer, we don't review those unless it gets escalated to an internal review. Or maybe it's IRC, Internal Review Committee. Sorry, I don't remember the acronym. So in twenty October through December twenty twenty one, we didn't review any. And these are just our final raw numbers of the types of cases that we reviewed, the same information that's reflected on the spreadsheets, these two first pages of the spreadsheet. Any questions about October through the December twenty twenty one?
Abby, what does OC stand for?
That's the that's pepper spray. So you'll see here OC is pepper spray. OC pursuits are vehicle pursuits. Physical is when they go hands on with somebody, they take them to the ground. Distraction blows, which is actually a term that's in our policy, is a distraction blow. Show of force is a if somebody with an officer pulls out his firearm, his or her firearm and directs it in the points it in the direction of the subject that they're trying to get compliance over and is accompanied with commands. That's a show of force, a firearm use as a firearm discharge. That now includes, I believe, that now includes less lethal discharges. That was not true as I think a couple of years ago, and we've changed that in our policy because in our minds, a subject, your regular civilian is not going to know the difference between a less lethal firearm and a firearm firearm, because they look the same. So we now include firearm, the discharge of a less lethal, not non-lethal, but a less lethal firearm. Canines of the dogs, tasers, batons, forced entry, like I said, are the breaches of doors. Tire spikes are what they throw out during, they try to do dry spikes when they're not, when these subjects are not running, but they also do them while they're in the middle of a pursue. Any other questions about terminology? Okay. I will move on now to January through March of twenty twenty two. Again, the same categories of force, shows of force, use of force that we have here. Again, our January and February numbers are slightly elevated to accommodate for the November cases that we did not get. And again, everything was in policy, none we found out of policy. And just a few that we send back for more information. These cases that we send back for more information. So let's take, for example, January. These six cases that we sent back for more information, we usually review by the following month. And so you can consider this number here. So it says six for January, seven in February. Those are seven new cases and do not include the six that we sent back previously. These six that we sent back previously are now counted in the total of number of cases that we've reviewed for February. So you can assume that these six cases that we sent back for more information are included in this number of one hundred and eleven that we found in policy.
So you have another line item there, impact round?
Impact round, that is the less lethal.
Okay.
Any questions about our reviews of these cases from the first quarter of twenty twenty two? Before I move on to complaints? No? Okay. So we did review a few complaints in January through March of twenty twenty two. Now, of course, I can't remember who they are or what the allegations are. It's one of those things where you read so many cases, you just dump them out of your brain. There are a few that that stand out, but for some reason, these from January or from earlier this year are not standing out. You'll see in February, we had oh, you know what? I actually do remember because it's here. I will just skip down to our last page here. So these are the these are the complaints that we just discussed or that we were just looking at. So if you go to page four of your slide deck. The one case is C twenty two dash zero zero one IA, that's the internal affairs number that they've assigned to it. This is a case that we reviewed in February, one allegation against one officer. We sustained an allegation of working a secondary employment while on duty. This came to us after there was some suspicion that one of our officers was double dipping. He was supposed to be working for us and or working for his secondary employment, and he was charging both for his time. So that's what happened there. And then two employees, you'll see here, two employees in March that we reviewed for a total of six allegations, for sustained to not sustained. And you'll see that it's for sustained allegations of conduct and becoming an employee dishonesty and insubordination. I believe that this had to do with an inappropriate, sorry, an inappropriate sexual and or romantic relationship between two of our officers. I think that that's what that was. How we found for the allegations sustained to that were not. Now, before it gets to us, before it gets to PSRB, because we are not an investigative body, we rely on the IRC Shane Matheson's group and Paul's group to conduct the investigation. So once and then, once a complaint comes to them, they'll conduct the investigation, they'll they'll gather the documents, the witness statements that they need to make an adjudication. And then once they've made or completed their investigation and reached their own conclusion, then they present the the information to us to PSRB. They'll do a presentation during one of our meetings. And then we will discuss it at that meeting. Our members will discuss it at that meeting and we'll either sustain the allegations or will not sustain them or find them unfounded. Or of course, exonerate them. I know that there's been some concern, some question about objectivity, if if we find that the presentation of information is objective enough, or if the participants in the initial investigation way too much into into our into our discussions. I will say that when we receive the documents, I know that I and the other members of PSRB make an appointment to review the documents, interview transcripts, whatever else, what other, whatever other information that they've provided to us before we go into a meeting and we will most likely already have an idea of what we are going to decide or which way we're leaning before we go into a meeting. Paul and Shane only provide us their advice if we are, if we ask them, and they try to be as objective as they can be. Because they don't want to influence our decisions. And they are non non-voting members of of PSRB. They are just advisory in capacity only. So any questions about about that? We could be assured that we do our best to be objective. This hasn't been a concern recently, but I will say that there has been some question of PSRB's objectivity and ability to make an independent decision following a shooting that had occurred several years ago, but was just recently adjudicated, I think it was this year. And that was a a legal firearm discharge, an officer, an OICI officer involved, critical incident. Where PSRB found the shooting to be in policy and the public who are not always involved or not involved at all in the types of review that we that we do questioned whether we were just a rubber stamp for the police department. And in response to that, the answer is is no. So any questions about this first quarter of twenty twenty two? No? Okay. April through June of twenty twenty two, we had a smaller number. We tend to see smaller numbers in the spring and the summer. Especially if it's really hot, people like to stay inside and don't commit as many criminal offenses, which I think is is kind of funny. But we have the same, again, the same categories of uses of force, shows of force, firearm discharges here. Again, none, we found out a policy, all we find, all of them we found in policy and we sent ten back. Again, none, we found out a policy, all we find, all of them we found in policy, and we sent ten back. Um, in April for more information. Generally, they are newer officers who are going through the training program. Um, occasionally we'll get a veteran officer who falls back to his or her. Old ways, um, and is not as careful as they should be with their report writing. Um, but we sent ten back in April, reviewed those ten in May, found them all in policy. Um, and then four back in May, um, and reviewed those in June. We had additional, let's see, one additional complaint. You know, I'm actually thinking that this April one is the second person who was involved in that. Um, sexual relationship with the officer that we reviewed in the previous quarter. Um, I seem to remember now that we reviewed. Them separately. They did not come up at the same time, and now I'm not remembering what. Um, the other internal complaint that we reviewed in the first quarter. And we only see that it was sustained, and we don't see what the actual allegation is. Any questions about our third quarter, or sorry, second quarter in twenty twenty two? Okay, great, nope. And then finally, the July through September twenty twenty two. Um. Again, all of, we found every, every case that came before us in policy. Um, we didn't find any out of policy and a few that we had to send back for for additional information. No complaints that we risked, that we reviewed in July through September of twenty twenty two. And then this is just a summary of the information that were, that was included in the previous charts. And with that, any questions?
Any questions? No, I think you did a wonderful job explaining all of it. Um, the ten years I've been on council, it has definitely, you guys have a lot on your plate, and we appreciate all the hard work you put in. It's very important for our residents to have this board. So if you would relay back to that board how much we appreciate all your hard work, I would appreciate that.
I will. I will. I'll let them know, and we and we enjoy the work. We appreciate. Um, that the city gives us this opportunity to represent our community and to be the voice of the people. Um, I know over the last couple of years, there have been strained relationships between the community and police officers. Um, and I, and I do have to say probably unfairly. Um, and so we do appreciate that in the face of. That kind of, you know, hostility, because really there's no better word to say, you know, to use than to say that it was hostile. Um, that we were still given, you know, that opportunity and that we really didn't. Lose much of our relationship with our, with our officers, and I'm really proud of our officers that they are. Uh, it's a fantastic force. Um. Uh, we are innovative in the way that we approach, or the police department is innovative in the way that they approach. Uh, the relationship with the community, and I'm really proud of that and appreciate uh, what they do for our city.
Well, thank you.
Okay, well, thanks everyone.
Hey, thank you for your presentation. See you next year.
See you next year.
All right, now we'll move on to our council calendar. Um. You should be getting a email from Angel about the basketball schedule. And what night you'll have the tickets. She's working on that today. And then, pardon?
I got mine.
Okay, good. Everybody's good there?
She didn't explain that it was page two of the hockey schedule.
Oh, I didn't.
Wait a minute, I already got those tickets.
Well, that's interesting, because I opened it, said I already have those tickets. Well, those, that schedule.
Yeah.
But I had asked her to send it because mine got lost in the back email, so I will go to page two now.
Yeah, page two has the. Rest of the schedule.
Hey, thank you for that. All right, did anybody else have any concerns? Okay. Um, next we'll go to potential future agenda items. Did anybody have anything?
I do want to bring it up again about this sidewalk that is any way we can. Uh, do something maybe in, I don't know, not only the. Lhasa Avenue and Crystal Avenue, but the other places in our cities, which I wonder maybe we can put us in a. Some kind of communication there, we can discuss about and try to figure out how we can attack all those.
Okay, um, ask Public Works to come back with the best scenario of what, how long the audit would take. And then we could decide as a council if we want to. Start some of those projects before the safe schools is back.
Hmm, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Sorry, what?
So.
Come back with a what, and then what?
With a kind of an idea of maybe what the audit, what the safe school is going to be, if it's going to be. Or a six month.
Okay.
And then we can, with that information, make an intelligent decision of whether or not we want to bypass it.
Depends on which rules, which year.
I know.
They're kind of like the Fed Rams, you know, that safe.
Yep.
School changed every year too.
Yeah, so if we just get an idea.
Yeah.
Then we'll make an informed decision. I mean, it looks like Councilman Pitimsmanu. Hey, Mr. Pitimsmanu?
Hi, thank you. Um, as we've been talking a lot about um, cadence and prioritization for. You know, overlays and sidewalks and street lights and uh, other things. Uh, street signs came to my mind, and I would love to learn a little bit more. Again, maybe it doesn't have to be a formal. Agenda item or communication, but um, I'd love to know about. Uh, as we ride around, we see some of our street signs are different. Some of them are still the old green ones, some of them are the fancy new black ones. Some of them are in various states of um, clarity versus. Fading or o- opacity, I guess we could call it. And so I was just wondering um, what that looks like in terms of. Um, how we're replacing them. Is there a concerted effort to make them all the same? Um, and and what that's like. So yeah, that's a question that I have.
I I can actually speak to that right now. So uh, we have a program mod that we had submitted, but not necessarily. Said we'd like to do it this year. It's pretty sizable cost. And what that program mod would do is get us caught up all at once and standardize all the street signs throughout the city. Things have changed over the years, like Jake was saying, in terms of. Both what kind we've used in the past, there was the green ones, there were the black ones, then the feds changed their. Standard, the green ones would still be um, acceptable to their, like, now I forget which spec it is, but anyway. Acceptable, but the black ones are not. We have come back or gone back, and they once again have changed the spec, and we have some. Street signs that we recommend or would like to recommend that would both. Let us unify the whole system throughout the city, but also meet that federal standard. Now. Here's the catch to the, to the project. The program mod, which is pretty expensive, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Uh, maybe a little less, and that would replace every single. Sign in the city and would let us start afresh or new. Or we could just pick the standard and start phasing them in. The problem with that is we just do not have the. Number of staff and uh, vehicles from just a rotation standpoint that we may ever catch up by the time we get done. At the end, the new ones that we're putting in now would also be faded and probably obsolete. Either one of those would work. It really just is more of a matter of preference and aesthetic and where we want to prioritize money. So we do have that program mod. We even have the. Street signs picked. We even responded to a request by Councilman Whitstone for a few specific. Signs in his neighborhood that he'd gotten um, requests. To get taken care of, and we were just as a little pilot, gonna go out and put the new ones. Up, which would be easily switch outable if uh, council didn't like them or whatever from a. Design standpoint. Anyway, but anyway, the, the point is, we do have a plan. And the plan can go either way. Uh, Jake, it's just a matter of how fast and how much resource-wise we want to put towards it.
So my question is on the new signs. Are they going to fade like the black ones? The green ones seem to never fade.
That's forever.
Yeah.
Well, the green ones are actually the ones in Councilman Whitstone's neighborhood that need to be replaced. They don't last forever. But they did last a lot longer than the black ones. And now we're in like the third generation of the black ones, which supposedly. Now will last, but they aren't in compliance with the federal standard. The other ones that we are bringing on supposedly will last, but of course, that's another matter of. Time will tell after we put them up.
Well, and can we protect ourselves with a better warranty on them?
Uh, Dan and and uh, whoever he's working with can speak better to that, but.
So can we have a presentation?
Warranty standpoint, I don't know for sure. I do know that we have gone through the. Design specs. We think we know why the black ones faded. And why the new ones should not, but yes, of course, we can have a.
Presentation on that.
Presentation on warranty of the street signs.
Well, and the designs or whatever.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just everything in general?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That'd be great, thanks.
Anybody else? Um, I have one item, Mr. Win keeps coming back for the speed bump. Report. Um, is there any way we can get a? Uh, on the study agenda that we can work on that?
It's, it's finished, ma'am.
Oh, his is finished now?
Yeah, he just hasn't, because it's working its way through internally. We already know what the results of the speed. Study are. Eric Bronham's working them up. He's gonna submit them to Dan. Dan will submit them to me, but yeah, it's it's finished.
Okay, because my concern was the one I brought up in September. If he had spoke to the person that asked for it.
Right.
They would have known there were five school service from that, and there were zero on his report. So I just think we need to do a better study of that report and make sure it's covering everything. So if we could bring that back in the future and maybe review that. And see if there's a better way to get them through faster and make sure they're accurate.
Okay.
Okay. All right, seeing nobody else, council reports.
Just a quick report. You and I were out breaking ground for the new quick car wash.
Yep.
We decided that it's much more fun to break ground after a machine has been through it first.
Put you the little pile of dirt to show, opposed to actually have to dig the hole.
So we can penetrate more than that.
Not that far. I got maybe a half inch to an inch. There wasn't much dirt to fill.
But uh, it's gonna be great when they get it built.
Yeah.
A little hard to find.
Once there's a big car wash, I think it'll be easier.
Yeah.
Because I was looking for a ribbon cutting, not a groundbreaking, so.
Also, uh, Saturday, my wife and I went down and decorated uh, the Canadian tree for the trees of diversity. And it, as usual, every year developed into. Five hours instead of an hour and a half project. So we got to listen to the International Survivors of Suicide Loss program that was going on. Uh, and they, they were handling it very well. Uh, we had to quietly move out that we got our tree decorated, and so we didn't hear the whole program, but it wasn't. They said it was not too well attended because it was first of its kind, and. I was kind of impressed at the attendance for a first year. So, but it was a good program, and I'm sure Healthy West Valley will probably. Look at working with them again next year.
Good. Anybody else? Okay. Um. Do you have a need for a close session? No? Okay, and one more actual item?
Motion to issue.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are a.